Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you very much for coming. We're joined by some Board of Finance members in the room and also joining from home. And thank you very much to our, our staff and our students, our students at our administration for being here tonight. And obviously to our, the Reading Board of Education. This evening, we're honoured to present the Reading Public Schools two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Superintendent's Proposed Budget. Tonight is just the first step in the process where we collaborate with you, make adjustments, propose solutions, and put forth the best possible strategic plan um and uh quality education for the students of Reading. We've said that education is an investment in human capital and a school budget reflects our educational values and defines our priorities each year. Each dollar we allocate towards our local schools make a difference, and I believe that the Reading families want the best possible return on investment. Almost eighty percent of our residents voted to support the education budget last year and the year before that. And I believe that this community values education. I believe our neighbourhood, neighbourhood schools improve proper values and reflects how our families feel about their most important asset, their children. So therefore, we put forth a budget with equal parts quality and economic value. And we begin tonight in the same fashion as last year. We've already made some cuts and some prioritised spending, and we're eager to present these strategies to you now and start the conversation. So our budget presentation tonight is divided into seven sections. Please note that people who view our presentation at home or even in the audience this evening can ask a question by using this QR code. And we seem to have our first technical difficulty.
It's changing on the screen.
It's changing on the screen, so just bear with me when I send it in. Now let's see if I can directly upload this.
That's not quite for this thing.
My apologies. Hi Jamie. We, it was working. A good way to start, a good way to start. Yep, I'm going to hide more up here in the HDMI cable. Are you ready to connect it? I am ready to connect. Right, you have to get out of screen share, this will just go. Can you do that?
Oh, there we go.
We're good. So, do you want it to hear for this? It's standing. Yes, great. Oh, yeah.
There.
Alright.
There, listen in here.
More shame. It extended its play. Yeah, sorry, can I extend it and then hear?
What? I'm glad I've sent you. You wouldn't have jumped. We can look like you.
There we go.
That's it, yeah. Now, now we know. There is Jeff.
Okay, there we go.
And there's Rob.
Alright. So, thank you, everyone. My apologies for the technical difficulties there. Um, we were just talking about the agenda. So here is the agenda for this nice presentation. Um, first, we're going to talk about our budget process, provide a brief introduction, then we'll talk briefly about our strategic priorities. And then third, we'll talk about some of our budget drivers for this particular budget. Um, four, we'll talk about enrolment, staff changes and grants. In section five, we'll have a detailed um conversation about our cost centres. We'll present our overall budget summary and then we'll talk to you about next steps. So, in section one is really the budget process and introduction. And we changed our budget process about three years ago, and we transitioned from a budget object model uh with about four hundred different accounts. We've organised those accounts into six broad cost centres. And so those cost centres represent each school. So one cost centre is Reading Elementary School, another cost centre is John Reed Middle School. And then we also have cost centres of special education, facilities, technology, district-wide curriculum and instruction and centralised. We will present each cost centre to you uh in section five. So at this time of the year, we're starting to see other school districts present their Board of Education, not excuse me, not their Board of Education budget, but their superintendents' proposed budgets. During this budget cycle, it will not be uncommon to see budgets averaging around six point two percent, uh as reflected in the yellow bar uh on this slide. You'll see some examples in this slide. Budget drivers like health insurance, special education, utilities, transportation and so on are pushing higher and higher increases and beginning to crowd out student improvement initiatives. For reference, the average superintendent's budget proposal last year at this time was four point nine two percent. And you can see already that are averaging um over six percent. Board of Education budgets were adopted last year at four point seven six percent, which represents approximate decrease of a, of a point two percent below where the superintendent was presenting. And for those towns that have a board of finance, average budgets were about three point five six percent, a further reduction of point two percent. Overall, education budgets were adopted at around three point seven percent by the towns. And the Reading budget last year was adopted without any change from the Board of Ed, from the Board of Finance at three point one eight percent. We're very fortunate that both the towns of Eastern and Reading adopted budgets unchanged last year. And this slide just demonstrates that this year in particular, we're seeing um some more um specific challenges around special education, transportation and contracts, which we'll talk about. As pointed out in the previous slide, school districts are facing some common fiscal challenges. However, we're committed to uh these four strategies. One, we're committed to allocate grant funds to reduce operations. We are interested in looking not just this budget, but budgets in the future, and so therefore we have a strategic plan which focuses on financial stability uh and describes our priorities for the next four years. And in addition to that, we're focused on high leverage instructional strategies um as well. So moving on to section two, as I stated during the introduction, a budget is based on our strategic plans and highly successful organisations and schools have two things in common. That is that they're future-focused and that they're strategic. And therefore, it is important to craft actionable priorities that improve student achievement and guide the allocation of resources. So by now, you're familiar with our strategic plan. Our strategic plan was first developed so that we could allocate resources uh and then identify our priorities uh over the next several years. Uh whenever improving an organisation, priorities and actions require three things. Financial resources, human resources and expertise. The most challenging task is to link our priorities to student achievement. And this is where the expertise is needed. We've incorporated metrics and goals from our district and school improvement plans. We presented those to you in October and they were called dips and steps, if you remember. Uh, we've incorporated those things into our strategic plan so that we never lose sight of our most important objective, which is student achievement. Furthermore, our strategic plan defines key milestones which represent both qualitative and quantitative measures derived from our priorities. And metrics and goals define our strategic priorities all the way out to two thousand and twenty-six. But those key milestones, which is challenging to see on the slide here, but you can see that on our strategic plan website, are things like students will complete five hundred computer science lessons by the time they leave into middle school. We want to increase the percentage of students taking Algebra One in eighth grade. We want to increase access to students participating in extracurricular activities. We want to focus on um high-quality instruction. We want to expand computer science pathways at the elementary level, which leads into um increased access in computer science at the high school. These are all the things that are, that are detailed in our strategic plan. And so our priorities fall into these six categories. So we've discussed this in a lot of detail. Um, but these six broad priorities have up to fifty action steps um in them as well. And they're all reflected as part of our um our budget plan. We're deeply grateful to the board and to the community for supporting our priorities during this year's budget. And I'd like to take the opportunity to share some of the highlights with you for priorities that we've um got to focus on next year. This slide is in your handout, and there are handouts uh on the back table. On the left-hand slide, it, on the left-hand side of this cha- uh chart here, it reflects some of the strategic priorities we've accomplished this year, like embedding high-impact instructional strategies into our district improvement plan. We added a K to eight math coordinator. We added an M L L teacher. Um, we've um developed a personal interest project in grade eight. So uh and and not just of priorities at the elementary and middle school level, we've also added advanced courses at the high school as well. On the right-hand side of this chart are just some of the priorities that we want to focus on next year and the following year. So we've talked a lot about high-impact instructional strategies. Now we want to ensure that teachers are more efficacious in their implementation. So that's a priority. You'll see in our budget that we want to focus on math problem solving, and so that's reflected in building thinking classrooms. Um, you'll see some examples of how we're coding and adding coding experiences to our elementary school. Um, we'll talk a little bit during our central office budget about how we're changing the director of digital learning position to a different type of position. And something that's new in our strategic plan, uh these action steps focused around interventions and how our reading teachers and our coaches um are providing services to students. And so we've added some elements there. So just to remind everyone, some of the work that you've committed to already, uh we wanted to start by just giving a brief update on the math coordinator. And so we added the math coordinator. A math coordinator is Karen Wilson. She's made a very good impression on staff so far. And she's been focused on increasing student achievement by building a better understanding of needs and leverage points, supporting teacher growth, building collaboration through coaching, understanding how instructional time is used um in the classroom to increase achievement. And as I mentioned, increasing the percentage of students taking Algebra One in eighth grade, which is a gateway skill to more advanced mathematics. So this time last year, we had about forty-eight percent of students taking Algebra One. And we're pleased that this year we have fifty-five percent of our students taking Algebra One. So we're moving steadily towards that goal. The emphasis on coding is a larger goal. Uh, and coding is um put in place to strengthen computer science and engineering pathways leading into the high school. And our goal for students is to become more digitally literate, which includes the many of the components that you see here in this slide. But what is coding? What does it look like? Simply, it's the process of writing out steps on a computer to achieve the goal. And we want our students to be familiar with HTML, Python, JavaScript. And currently, coding at the elementary level is happening during our library specials in the form of a block-based approach. That's where students get to learn about coding by manipulating blocks and pieces. But as students move into the upper elementary and middle school grades, they're starting to use more intermediate skills, which include blockly and um block-based coding programs, and they're starting to use coding language, um which will eventually lead into more advanced levels where students are using those coding languages that I just described before. And they may begin using artificial intelligence, where they can ask um AI to come up with lines of code or even refine lines alone, uh lines of code. So you'll see evidence of coding in our budget um through a recess called Code Monkey. And it's a type of coding curriculum which will help us reach the goal of five hundred lessons by the time students um move into, to the middle school. During this year's budget, we added a, an M L L teacher, and that is a teacher to help our students um with English language proficiency. And our goal are to increase our, the, the increasing number of students with, uh, who are, who are English learners to improve communication skills, to assist in identifying and testing those students. And when we provide help through a multi-language learner teacher to our P L students, we're also supporting our reading teachers um to stay true to their goal, which is to focus on struggling readers as well. In addition to our strategic plan, approximately one year ago, we arranged for an outside consultant to conduct focus groups um in the area of special education. And we developed a special education strategic plan as well, which we've begun talking to you about this for. And we've learned some things through that special education strategic plan. Uh, first, leading special education in three different silos led to some inefficiencies. Staff and parents began to feel that special education services were implemented inconsistently, and so we needed to adjust services in some areas. And finally, we needed to reorganise our leadership at the top, uh consolidate some lower-level administrative support. And so um we did develop a strategic plan. And those, that strategic plan is reflected in these five core priorities, which we can talk to you about uh in more detail. But one of the things you'll start seeing in our budget presentation is the way in which we reorganised special education leadership. Previously, we had two directors of special ed for three districts. This model impacted vertical alignment and passed costs along to Region Nine. And so the, the two items I'd like to bring to your attention is, first, we converted a shared administrative secretary position between Eastern and Reading and created a special education accountant that's housed at central office to help oversee these financial tra- uh transactions and access costs for three districts. But this is the model that we had previously. We essentially um took this position to turn that into a, a special education accountant. And second, we converted the director of special education in Region Nine uh to a supervisor level, and that's reflected in uh this slide here. Miss Catherine Matthews is now the director of special education that, uh that you see at the top for all three districts. There is a supervisor for each three, of, of, of each of the three districts for Eastern Reading and Region Nine. And finally, our strategic plan called for the addition of an I U P coordinator position. That's a certified teacher uh who assisted in coordinating and leading P P T meetings. And so you can see that position is uh within now the flowchart between the three different districts. So moving on to section three, this slide highlights some of the budget drivers for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Some of these items may not be a surprise to you, but first, medical insurance, particularly the cost of prescription drugs, is always a, a budget driver. We've secured Brown and Brown, who is our insurance consultant, to present to the Reading Board of Education on February sixth at six P M prior to our budget workshop. And our goal is to review health insurance claim history, to look at the benefits of um or looking, looking at our, our claim history and making a decision about this eleven percent increase that we see. Another major budget driver is just our staff. Eighty percent of our district is focused primarily on um certified and non-certified staff. And you can see here that certified staff is increasing four point one eight percent and non-certified staff is increasing six point five two percent. Two other budget drivers are related to um uh our district-wide cost centre. Electricity is going up ten percent. Transportation is going up six point seven percent overall. And we'll be talking about those um elements in section five. So in section four, we'll talk a little bit about enrollment. Enrollment projections are an important budgeting tool, and according to Prouder, our local demographer, between two thousand and twelve, two thousand and twenty, student enrollment in the Reading Public Schools declined from approximately eleven hundred students to eight hundred and four students. But student enrollment has rebounded to eight hundred and sixty-four students uh as of October two thousand and twenty-one. Student enrollment is projected to increase by four hundred and seventeen students over the next ten years to reach one thousand two hundred and eighty-one students by two thousand and thirty-three. Enrollment at Reading Elementary School is projected to remain relatively flat in twenty-four, twenty-five. We will need to evaluate kindergarten enrollment uh more towards the end of January into February. Uh, we're not changing kindergarten enrollment based on our September to December birth date um legislation that, that recently came down from the state, but we will be looking at uh kindergarten enrollment. And I'll be explaining why we have uh an increased budget to budget from our, the number of kindergarten sections um when we talk about the R E S um cost centre. And we do anticipate increasing a section in grade one next year because we have a hundred and seven students projected to be in grade one. A hundred of them now currently in kindergarten. Enrollment at John Reed Middle School is projected to increase by twenty-eight students in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. We anticipate increasing the number of sections in fifth grade from four sections to five sections. Enrollment at John Reed Middle School is expected to increase next year. And during the next ten years, it will fluctuate and average approximately three hundred and seventy students. And John Reed is projected to reach five hundred and sixty-eight students in two thousand and thirty-three. This slide is an overview of the staff changes reflected in our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We'll discuss each of these staff changes as we present in section five. The purpose of this slide is just a reference point for you to see all staff changes uh in one place. We have offset operational spending using grant funds. This slide highlights title grants, which um and the cost centre that they're contained in. We're seeing a decrease in title funding, uh which is based on student needs. So I draw your attention to the left column, which describes the grant. Uh, and you can see here that we have Title One, Title Two, Title Three and Title Four. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, the funds that we're receiving in those grants in that particular year and the funds we're projected to receive next year. Uh, then you can also see where we've offset particular areas in the budget and the cost centre locations. The district applied to write to read grant funding to offset the cost of our Amplify C K L A pilot programme for grades uh K to four. The grant funding was restricted to state-approved K to three reading programmes. And this is something that we just worked on in December of last year. You can see the amount of money we received in Reading in two thousand and twenty-three, two, two thousand and twenty-three, and again in two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Because we received these funds, we're spending this money uh towards K to three C K L A reading programmes, which means you won't see that in our operation budget because we're spending it out of the grant. However, you will see some supplemental materials for grades four in um our budget because they're not covered by the grant. Uh, we have offset special education operational spending using federal grant funding. This slide itemises offset from the I D E A grant uh part six eleven and six nineteen. The six eleven grant pertains to kindergarten through twelfth grade education and the six nineteen pertains to preschool education for ages three to five. The I D E A grant is an entitlement grant, uh which means we're guaranteed to receive it. And districts are notified of their grant allocation and then must submit an application for how we use the funds. And so you can see here on this slide how much money we're receiving this year for I D E A funding, how much money we're anticipated to receive next year, and the various cost out locations where we've used the grant fund to bring down operational points. So finally, in section five, this is where we'll go into each cost centre. It's difficult to see on the screen. I'll hit the highlights and you have a copy in front of you. But our first cost centre is Reading Elementary School. This cost centre is comprised of certified staff that includes administration, classroom teachers, instructional support specialists, non-certified staff, which includes paraprofessionals, custodians and secretaries, and finally, instruction and operation, which includes supplies, equipment, dues, fees and professional development. The total cost centre is five million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand and sixty-one dollars. It represents twenty-two percent of the overall Reading budget and is increasing by five point nine nine percent. We have budgeted for eight students from the Open Choice Programme, so you'll see a budget offset of negative twenty-four thousand dollars in teachers. During last year's budget process, the board approved the administration to add an additional kindergarten section or a special education teacher after we set the budget. So we ended up needing an additional kindergarten teacher based on enrollment this year. Therefore, we currently have six sections of kindergarten. But this reflects a budget to budget add of one. In other words, when you look at the budget, we'll see on paper we have five kindergarten teachers. But if you ask the administration over at Reading Elementary School, we actually have six kindergarten teachers this year. Uh, so this is something that we're going to have to watch closely. Enrollment in kindergarten fluctuates. Uh, it's not as clear-cut as students we currently have. Um, for example, we're pretty confident of that we need six sections of first grade uh next year. And we're projected to have a hundred and seven students, which is approximately eighteen students in each first grade class. We have six sections as compared to five sections. We're watching grade two and grade three closely. We've budgeted five sections for each grade level, um for the rest of the grade levels. And we'll study these grade levels and sections throughout the budget process. Because we are adding a sixth section of kindergarten, we would normally add a sixth part-time aide. However, we are changing the model where three full-time aides are more economical than six part-time aides. The staging budget to budget represents thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollar decrease, so you'll see that in the budget. We added a shared M L L teacher for Eastern and Reading, as discussed earlier, along with an M L L para for Eastern and Reading. The M L L para is split between Reading Elementary School and John Reed. It was partly funded through R P S A funds last year, and these funds have expired. So you'll see the M L L para in our operating budget. We currently have one point four F T E nurse support at R E S. We are requesting two F T E nurse support with a full-time nurse uh and a, a full-time nurse split between two part-time nurses, the two part-time nurses making up another whole. So you'll see all of those changes. These are the highlights for Reading Elementary School. Our second cost centre is John Reed Middle School. This cost centre also is comprised of certified staff, non-certified staff and operations. The total cost centre is five million, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which represents nineteen point five percent of the overall Reading budget and is increasing by four point six seven percent. Last year, we reduced a section of grade five based on enrollment. Now we are adding a section of grade five based on enrollment. Certified staff stipends and special activities have increased by approximately four percent. This reflects a reduction of the Title One grant fund of approximately six thousand dollars. And this illustrates how grant funding fluctuates from year to year and does have an impact to our operational budget. Instructional paras increased thirty-two percent or approximately nineteen thousand dollars. This represents the shared M L L para between uh Reading Elementary School, previously funded by the R P S A grant, which has expired. And John Reed Middle School has requested additional support for math interventions and a library media para. So we are adding point five for math intervention, a point five for the library media para, which represents a, a total of one F T E. Instructional text increased to accommodate Instructional texts increased to accommodate increased section in grade five. And we also moved seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars to instructional software for various digital subscriptions. So when we talk about the technology budget, we'll see the transfers we made out of this particular cost centre into that cost centre. Instructional supplies increased by approximately seven thousand dollars to be matched copy paper. Dues and fees increased by sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars because John Reed Middle School is requesting a teacher intern, which is a sixteen thousand dollar investment. A student intern is a teacher in training. And supporting this program invests in teacher training and also supports the school where the teacher intern can act as a substitute teacher or in a longer-term capacity. This increases teacher consistency and potentially reduces substitute teacher expenses. The grade eight science teachers identified some further enhancements to replace some tired furniture in their classrooms. So you can see a request for furniture in furniture in and fixes in this particular cost centre as well. So moving on, our third cost centre is special education. This cost centre comprises of certified staff, which includes classroom teachers, but also other areas like speech and language pathologists, school psychologists, and so on. Non-certified staff, um, non-certified staff like paraprofessionals, behavior techs, secretaries, and finally, instruction and operation, which includes supplies and equipment like our two school cost centres, but also includes transportation, tuition, and outplacement. Special education services tend to fluctuate. Last year, this cost centre represented a three point five percent increase. Eastern is currently seeing up to a ten percent increase in the area of special education services largely based on outplacement tuition. But the total cost centre in special education for next year is estimated at six million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars, which represents twenty-three percent of the Reading budget, but is actually decreasing by about one point five percent budget to budget. The director of special education position is now shared between three districts rather than two districts, as I said previously. This represents a twelve thousand dollar savings. The shared I E P coordinator position represents a twenty-four thousand dollar share to Reading. During this year, we needed to add a special education teacher at John Reed Middle School. Therefore, this budget reflects a budget to budget change of seven to eight special education teachers. The increase in certified teachers pre-K is based on less projected tuition, moving two hundred and fifty-nine thousand to approximately two hundred and thirty-two thousand. This reflects twenty-four students or approximately twenty-four students times our pre-K tuition, which is six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars per student. We are reducing point two F T E school psychology services between John Reed Middle School and Reading Elementary School based on resignation. This represents a savings of approximately thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars budget to budget. Speech and language services are being decreased by point four F T E. We are reducing one instructional para at John Reed Middle School. So you'll see a change from six paras to five paras. This account area is also heavily supplemented by the IDEA grant. We are adding point eight occupational therapy services based on students' needs. And a B C B A, their salaries have increased based on market value. As discussed earlier, we eliminated a shared special education secretary and added a special education accountant, which is reflected in a new account line. And overall, tuition and outplacement is decreasing thirty-seven percent or two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And transportation is also decreasing approximately twenty-five percent or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As a result of significant tuition and transportation savings, excess cost reimbursement declined approximately ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. So the story in special education is that special education is contracting in Reading next year by about one point five percent. That is certainly not the story in most districts. And as I mentioned before, special education is increasing in Eastern by up to ten percent. The fourth cost centre is facilities. This cost centre is comprised of building and maintenance contracts, cleaning and repair projects, and supplies. The total cost centre is six hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. It represents about two point three percent of the overall Reading budget and is seeing a nineteen point nine percent increase. The drivers here are the escalating prices of basic supplies and ongoing repairs. Maintenance contracts increased by approximately seventeen percent based on increasing fees, contracts, and updated quotes. Cleaning and repair services are increasing. The main driver here is a seventeen thousand dollar request to power wash and clean the outside of John Reed Middle School. There are also some window, window cleaning, fence and gate replays, and some line repainting. And all of those areas are seen in the cleaning and repair services line. Disposal services have increased. And that's largely because our disposal services contractor has not increased costs in many years. And that increase reflects a market adjustment in next year's budget. In projects, we initially budgeted for a paving project just outside the John Reed Middle School cafeteria for the amount of thirty thousand dollars. However, we took that item out and we need to talk to the board into funding that paving project as part of our capital recruitment plan, or we might consider funding that project with N W U funds. That's a decision that we will need to make soon. The supply lines have increased by six point eight percent, which reflects money associated with the new state mandate for feminine hygiene products to be added in all grades three to twelve. And as noted earlier, supplies are increasing based on general inflation. So our fifth cost centre is technology. This cost centre is comprised of salaries for our shared network administrator, our technology assistants, building and maintenance contracts, cleaning and repair, and supplies. The total cost centre is seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. It represents two point eight percent of the overall Reading budget and is increasing approximately thirty percent. Management and software services are increasing approximately thirteen percent because we transferred items into the technology cost centre, like the Destiny Library Management Software, along with other management services. Hardware is increasing seventeen percent as a result of a STEM lab refresh at John Reed Middle School and staff laptops or Chromebooks at Reading Elementary School. We will see funds for ongoing Chromebook replacements. We are currently one-to-one with student Chromebooks. We have a Chromebook for every student in the district. And more importantly, you'll see a request for Chromebooks in our budget because we generally fund one Chromebook cycle replacement in grades two and again in grade five. In the past, we actually use S A funds to supplement some of our Chromebooks replacement. But as you know, S A funds have expired. In terms of E rate, we receive approximately fifty percent reimbursement on the dollar for hardware purchases. Instructional software, instructional software is increasing approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Typically, new programs are funded out of curriculum and instruction. However, these costs are moving out of the curriculum instruction line and moving into our technology line. And so some of the instructional software programs that you're seeing supported in this line, Amplify CK LA for grades four and five, Math and Vision and Exemplars, school-wide resources such as Brain Pop, Brain Pop Junior, materials for our eighth grade personal interest project, and also software for our music and world language departments. Our sixth cost centre is in curriculum and instruction. This cost centre is typically comprised of curriculum work, professional services, which includes professional development for teachers and textbooks. This cost centre is representing sixty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, which represents just over a quarter of a percent of the Reading budget. But it has a significant decrease next year of up to forty-five percent. And the reason why this cost centre is decreasing this year is because it is following heavy investments in this particular area last year. And now key investments like our math coordinator, new textbooks are being moved into our other cost centres. The largest area in the curriculum budget is instructional and professional development. This area includes a small fund for professional development to cover areas like math problem solving. K to eight teachers will participate in building thinking classroom professional development related to improving problem solving, restorative practices, and consulting to support our P I P program in grade eight. Our standard cost centre is district-wide. This centre includes medical insurance, food services, transportation, tuition, substitutes, utilities, and legal audit services. This cost, this cost centre is pretty susceptible to inflationary pressures. The total cost centre is six million, seven hundred and seven thousand and thirty-one dollars. It represents twenty-six percent of the overall Reading budget and is increasing at six point eight five percent budget to budget. Our transportation costs have increased six point seven percent overall. We've reached the end of our five-year contract with First Student. Typically, you have two options when this occurs. You can extend the current contract with the current vendor or you can build a new contract or bid a new contract, excuse me. Our research has new bids coming in at approximately seventeen percent. So it's more cost-effective at this time to extend the contract with a trusted company. And this is something that we have to discuss as a board and eventually with our transportation committee. But rather than approximately a seventeen percent increase, we went out to bid, we're actually seeing approximately a ten percent increase if we keep our current vendor. And our buses are relatively new. They have about sixty-six thousand miles on them on average. As noted earlier, health insurance is projected to increase twelve percent. This topic deserves closer attention and we've scheduled a meeting with our consultant, Brown Brown. And we have to dive deeper into claim history and look at escalation of the next few years. Our utilities account is down five percent overall. However, electricity is increasing eight percent and is budgeted at two point five cents per kilowatt hour. And heating oil is locked in this year at two dollars and seventy-three cents per gallon. It was locked in at three dollars and seventy-five cents per gallon last year's budget. Therefore, we're seeing a savings in that particular area. Legal and audit services require thirty-one thousand dollar increase or approximately twenty percent. We transferred twenty thousand dollars from special education to district-wide for legal services. And we're also negotiating the teacher's contract next year. Typically, when you negotiate a teacher's contract, you have to encompass some money for additional legal expenses to cover that process. And our final cost centre is central office. It's not really a cost centre but more of an equal share for our district. Central office includes the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the director of finance and operations, our H R manager, our new business and facilities operations manager. And this total cost centre is seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars, which represents three percent of the overall Reading budget and is a increase of six percent budget to budget. My overall impression of this cost centre is that you're getting a good return on investment considering you have a pretty small staff at central office that is managing three school districts and three budgets. This cost centre includes the addition of the facilities business manager position that I just talked about. We have a projected budget increase of about two to three percent for salary increases for central office employees. And we're happy to discuss central office, the central office budget at the upcoming tri-board meeting. We're at a negotiating committee meeting with you soon. So section six. This is just a budget summary of everything that I've just talked to you about. The R E S cost centre represents about twenty-two percent of the overall Reading budget and is increasing by five point nine nine percent. The John Reed Middle School cost centre represents about twenty percent of the overall budget and is increasing by four point six seven percent. The special education budget represents about twenty-three percent of our overall budget and is decreasing by one point five percent. The facilities cost centre represents about two point three percent of our overall budget and is increasing by approximately twenty percent. The technology cost centre represents two point eight seven percent of our overall budget and has a thirty percent increase largely because we're transferring software into that particular line. The curriculum and instruction cost centre represents about a quarter percent of the overall Reading budget and is decreasing forty-five percent. The district-wide cost centre represents a little over twenty-five percent of the overall Reading budget and has a six point eight five percent increase budget to budget. And central office, which represents about three percent of the overall Reading budget, is increasing six percent budget to budget. So therefore, the superintendent's proposed two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five education budget is twenty-five million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars, which represents a four point six five percent increase or an increase of one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. And finally, we are extremely proud of the work associated with this budget, including our strategic priorities. Sarah will share the budget website with the community during this meeting tonight. Meanwhile, we encourage everyone to ask budget questions by using the Q R code or the survey link showed in this slide. I think together, these tools provide increased transparency and develop understanding around our financial investments in education. We also plan to have future dialogue with our community stakeholders through various meetings and social media. And to close, we're proud of the progress we've made this year and in the last couple of years. We're starting to see results through our student achievement measures. During the past decade, state funding and aid has not kept up with rising childcare costs, utility increases, and special education needs. School districts can get caught in a cycle of yearly cuts, crowding out the possibility of new endeavors and advancements in the classroom. But I'm hopeful that our strategic plans are funded. I hope that we can make smaller decisions now so that larger, more difficult decisions are averted down the road. And I believe that the school district that believes in these investments will significantly improve the quality of education. And last year, just to remind you, eight in ten community members supported our education budget. And I'm hopeful that that support will continue again this year. Our job is to make a compelling case for lasting change. And I believe through your leadership, we can accomplish that goal again tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So we can go ahead and open it up for questions now. And we'll invite our foreign finance members and Jim as well to ask any questions that you have. If you're on Zoom, we can just raise the virtual hand and we will get your question answered. Any questions to start? I can, I can start. With the, the special education budget decreasing, particularly with outplacement, are we able to tie that to our Bridges and Basins program at all, in terms of the success in the program? Or is that more just the tides of the year and coincidence?
I think so. I think any, I think our Bridges program, our junior Bridges and Bridges programs have been extremely successful in keeping some students in our district and meeting the needs of our students. And also helping those students to, to stay in district is not just sound economic, a sound economic strategy, but it's also helping students stay close with their families and their friends. This particular change, I think, isn't just about the junior Bridges program. We're just seeing a reduction in related services, which is based on student needs. And sometimes, despite having our junior Bridges program and Bridges program, we still see an increase in our placement tuition and transportation. And this, in this particular case, we're not projected to have those increases in our placement tuition and transportation next year as we have in, in previous years. Which is very different than where we are in Eastern at the moment, where we're seeing a significant increase in our placement tuition and transportation. And sometimes that just depends on the students that we have. And sometimes that just depends on the students that we have in front of us and what their needs are.
Um, okay. Uh as far as the the strategic priority on coding, the K to four and K to eight, I guess, there's the, I saw the increase in software. Do you specifically mention coding? Do we have like an investment in coding materials or teaching management or anything like that?
There is a program called Code Monkey and Code Monkey is a uh it's it's almost a digital subscription curriculum. And it has a whole series of lessons K through four, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking to pilot it this year and then the budget proposal does include a four thousand dollar uh investment in Code Monkey should we decide to go with that.
Okay. Uh the the organization of special ed may be one little sense and I amend it. Um but I'm wondering how we deal with the unexpected special ed students. And we know that only we have a universe that we're dealing with now. But in next October, we might have another student and I'm wondering how we deal with that in the budget.
Okay. It is challenging. Um we budget for tuition and outplacement in three ways. Uh we we budget for students that we know about, but they're not yet um finalized outplacements. So we have a category called not yet finalized outplacements. Then we have a category called known outplacements. So students we know are going to make their outplace already or they've got, we know for sure they're going to be outplaced. And so we budgeted uh for that as as well. And what we have done in the past is we've budgeted contingency in the area of special education. So we actually call it Special Education Contingency Fund and we put in fifty seventy five thousand dollars in that particular area. Just to your point, you don't know that a student is going to come in from another district that would buy a costly outplacement. And um an outplacement could be anywhere from a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. And um most of the time, when you get an outplacement in that way, you can link that back to excess costs, meaning that based on our per people expenditure and our threshold, uh we'll get a percentage of that money back. Um but it is a moving target sometimes to budget for students who we don't yet know exist for a costly outplacement.
But you you've got at least some allowance in there for the student we don't know about yet.
Uh not, not currently. We we, like I said, we've done that in the past. That's not included in um next year's budget. But if you, if we um, Sarah, I don't know, have you shared the, have you shared the um the published view of the budget yet?
I did, yes. I I will send it to hold a, I'll send it to everyone as well. Um so if on our, there's a link right on our website to our budget documents that you can access and take a look at and click through. I don't know if anybody has some, I don't know if you have.
I can bring that up now, actually.
Bring that up and if you want, people can do that. But I will say that that is a discussion that I would love to have with the board of finance and and you know, with with Jim, that um and how we could think about making sure that if we want that how 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 the town would best like to handle that with the board.
But it sounds like we made a choice this year and did not put that contingency in the budget. But at some point in the past, we have done. Is that what you meant, Dr. McKinnon?
Uh, we know. So here is our renting budget website. And um this is what Sarah's developed and has sent out to Eric, to all of you. So you'll see tonight's presentation, uh which is here. And then down here, you'll see our, the actual budget sheets. Let me just go into that particular area. And the budget sheets are organized in these cost centers on the left hand side. So you can see the cost centers. And if you go into special education and go down to tuition and outplacement, you'll see where we've budgeted for not yet finalized outplacements, known outplacements, and potential settlements.
But do I, when I, when you said a minute ago that you had in the past, but what I would call contingency and for the student we don't know exists yet.
Right.
When did we last do that? And then we stopped doing that, I guess, is my question.
Um I have to get, I I can um, I can, I can research the answer to that question and get back to you.
But the point is, in the past, we've done, we just didn't do it this year in question.
Yeah, it always, when you, when, it is tricky. And when you, whenever you budget, no one likes to budget for a contingency, right? Because that's the first thing that's on the chopping block, right? And so uh that's something that we wrestle with.
Yeah, well, I just advise where we're going with this all.
That is right. At the end of the day, though, if that contingency comes to light, because it's not like, it's not going to happen when I'm a baker.
Right, yeah, in reality.
Oh, sorry. Um on the technology front, and that's the director of digital learning. And it seems, maybe I'm misunderstanding, it seems like there is investment in also just the children's experience in school. There's a real investment in technology, um that the Chromebooks, the software. I'm imagining this person is really going to be helping thinking through how technology fits in for learning experience and all of that. And is that person also gonna really think about what kinds of skills are going to continue to be relevant for students? What, what ways should technology no longer be a part of the educational piece too? Like, um, we're in such a rapidly changing world right now of um, what skills are even going to be relevant anymore? I I know that a lot of the, like the young people I'm hiring, I'm never thinking, oh, I wish they understood technology more. You know, I, and and I also get, a lot of the research seems to come out, like the testing and the learning on these books and all of that. Is this person going to help think through where there are opportunities actually to remove technology and to spend less on technology in addition to finding more interesting types of things? Is um technology as we know it now and technology how it fits into education? And it does seem to be kind of rapidly changing. And I wonder how that affects budget and who's helping think through those types of things.
Well, we have, so that's a great question. And um the director of digital learning is a position, the position is relatively new to Eastern Reading and Regional. It's probably a three year old position. In fact, I think the first year that we had that position was the first year that I started. And the person who was the director of digital learning was actually Sarah Scipani, who was sitting over, right? And um what we did after the after the twelve months is we actually changed central office. And we changed that position from a director of digital learning to Sarah's current role, uh which is the director of technology, finance and operations. We used to have a position called a director of finance, right? And so we combined the director of finance, uh and because Sarah had a skill set in technology, we 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 changed that position and it was a, now now Sarah's position is a director of, director of technology, finance and operations. We had the director of digital learning in our budget for 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 a year. We hired a person for that position, that position. And that that person left um around the winter holiday. And so that position is currently unsealed. And we are in um a research phase, basically looking at, Sarah was the director of digital learning, but now she's the director of technology, finance and operations. And we had this position called the director of digital um learning. Um what, what does that position look like in the future? What does it look like next year? Because that position was in our budget for about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, okay?
But if that position exists solely because of COVID?
No, I think it's a position that most districts have. Most districts have a director of technology or a director of digital learning.
Okay.
And um that position focuses on, so that's what you were talking about. Digital literacy, standards, how students are learning in the twenty first century, um how we're bringing teaching and learning to life, um using computers and screens and so on. Uh and so what we're looking at now in next year's budget is, are we keeping the director of digital learning? Because that person, that position is currently vacant. And whenever we have a vacancy or whenever we uh have an opportunity to change, we always think about, is that what we need? Is this an opportunity to change that position? And so we have changed positions in the same way that we changed two directors of special ed to one director of special ed, right? And so that's what we're currently studying. And it's not just about the digital tools that we want students to uh expose to. I guess it also is about technology we don't want to expose students to, right? I think that's just, I think that's important. I think that's right. It it's a balance between having students have access to screens and to learn about coding and um digital literacy, but also to learn the way that they've always learned with other areas of the curriculum.
So I I would just add, though, that the question you just raised is um not going unaddressed because of the vacancy. That is something that the two of us spend a fair amount of time discussing. And so in my role in terms of overseeing all curriculum and instruction and Sarah's role for technology leadership. So that is a conversation that's alive and well. So it's measuring, is this spend actually doing what we want it to be doing? And I think part of the idea with um with combining those two roles was to do exactly what you are, exactly what you're talking about, to say, you know, is this really the best? Is this the best product? Is this what we really want to have for that really mindful screen time? That we know is is how the digital tools should be used. And then you're absolutely right, the the conversation are, these are the tools that we know, that we know there are are better options out there. And so uh we work very closely to make sure that that um that we are aligning that with our strategic priorities and um and the tools that are currently available and evolving all the time.
What percentage would you say the average student today consists of digital learning versus the good old pen and paper?
I would say that we are still ninety percent uh focused on on curriculum uh where students have some type of print in front of them. So it's not as much as as you think, where we are um, where we have a lot of screens in front of our students, particularly at the elementary level. Uh it's a little bit more at the at the middle school level. I I'd have to think about what what that percentage would look like.
Well, when my son is in middle school, every day he'll work, always, every single lesson.
I'm working, yeah. Yeah, students access Google Classroom and all their assignments generally through their Chromebooks.
Yeah. Not the biggest standard.
Okay.
I just think that students will retain better and learn better, that they have to think about it more than just pecking on a screen or.
Right.
Uh are there any questions from, uh, anyone on Zoom?
Okay.
Oh, I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Trying to get that, get in there. I have a question about the um intern program at John Reed.
I was wondering which program is it through, which school is it through? Has that been decided? And mainly, I was wondering if it is through some sort of, you know, institution of higher learning and we're spending sixteen thousand dollars on it. If it goes well, are we planning on spending double that? Triple that to get more interns? And also, is there a student teacher program that happens currently at at either R E S or John Reed? And how is that different from what this would be?
We we usually get our student interns through Sacred Heart University.
Sacred Heart or the University of Bridgeport, and more recently through Fairford University. Those are the three major institutions where we have um brought our interns in.
So then I have, is this new on the budget or is this always on the budget?
It's new for John Reed. R E S has had uh an intern, one or two interns in the building as part of the budget for well over a decade. Right? So this is expanding and in part because we want to support the welcoming people into such a wonderful profession. And it also helps to offset our our need for substitute teachers. It gives students better um continuity in their instruction when it's a known person who's in the building. And the student teaching is really, sometimes it's connected to an internship. Sometimes um uh students will complete their student teaching either prior to an internship or at the end of an internship. And sometimes the student teaching is is just a standalone experience. It will blow the request up to my head. And then we look to see the teachers who have been trained as as mentors. And then there's an interview process. And if there's a good connection, then we welcome student teachers in all five levels.
Sort of a follow up. So if we have, do we have a line item for substitute teachers? And then did that decrease basically?
I believe it is flat budget to budget. And um we are currently looking at increasing the amount that we compensate a substitute teacher for. I believe our substitute teacher rate is around a hundred and fifteen dollars a day. No, actually, might be a little bit higher than that, maybe one twenty five. And we're looking at um what others districts are funding their substitute teachers at and increasing it by four to five dollars uh per day to remain competitive.
Less people, but the same amount.
Right. So um so that's a a good point, you know, you you're you're paying for a student intern for sixteen thousand dollars. Can we decrease our substitute teaching line by about the same amount? But we're also looking at our daily rate and making sure that we're competitive because we don't want two or three districts close to us with slightly higher student teacher rates and and um our, our substance, excuse me, not student teachers, but substitute teachers going to those districts when we do have a subservise. Um but I can get the answer to that question if you just walk in.
But you all have access to this spreadsheet that Dr. McKinnon has right here. And it's all clickable. So when you hover, when you hover over, or there's three little dots on the bottom, on the bottom and all the tabs um all the way along. I noticed that it's having a little problem reloading, probably because of the wifi in this, in this, in this room. And so you can click down through each item in each cost center. And if anyone needs any assistance with that technology as they go, as they go through, can reach out, let me know. You can let me know.
So just as an example, if you wanted to look at substitute teachers, you could either go to file and um actually you can go to edit, find and replace. You can type in substitutes. Right?
Dr. McKinnon, that one's not loading as quickly in this case. So my suggestion, um my suggestion is to go, is to go directly to. I can see that, I can see that in column.
Uh still learning, yeah.
Yeah, it's still, it's still loading. So the sheets, it is a, it is a large file, obviously, because it has a lot of information in there. There's over a hundred, there's over a hundred tabs that are that are broken down for you. So um so as you click through, but that's where you go to to do the find, to find, to be able to take a, to take a look, to find anything that's in there. So if you're looking for um a grant, a particular title grant, and it says in there that it's in the school's cost center. So if you put in grant and then title one, it'll come up for you. So this is um, that's, this is how that all, this is basically how how it all kind of works. Um Dr. McKinnon likes to click on the links that are inside the document. I like to click on the three little lines on the bottom and I like to click through, through, to through, click through to the tabs down there. That's how. That's how, that, um, that's how I like to navigate through it.
Oh, there's the sub.
And there's the sub, and there you can see the district-wide sub-line.
So you can see the general sub-line is staying flat. Um, overall, this is a two-point-two, two-point-two-seven percent increase in our sub-line, but that covers subs for, um, special education teachers, agencies, sub-custodians, summer custodians, paraprofessionals, uh, not just teachers.
And then you can kind of see, you know, what has been in that, in that area all the time.
So we all have this email, I love it. Could you just shoot it to the board after?
I did send it and it seems like it's just not wanting to ascend at the moment.
Okay.
It's lo, it's loading.
Okay, we'll make sure everyone has.
So I, I'll make sure that, I'll make sure that everyone, that everyone has it.
Great.
I was actually thinking about just restarting my own machine to see if that was gonna help.
In the spirit of this conversation, Richard, we've been being taught how to do technology. What happens if you don't increase the technology budget and you just keep it how it was before? Does that mess things up for the technology work? Like, do you need that?
So we.
As you tell us, to try to teach us how to use technology.
So, um, Dr. McKinnon was, was talking to the, to the point that, um, many things are moved to that cost center.
Uh-huh.
So there are a couple of reasons for that. One of them is that, um, the accounting, the accounting standards changed a little bit and they said, anytime there's a software that you have a subscription to, it's really important that you report that out in a different way.
Mm-hmm.
And so in order to do that, the, in order to do that, it makes sense to say, oh, this, this is, um, this is the last deck that is a print piece, but also is a magazine that goes home, that needs to go. We need to let the accountants know that this is a piece of technology that we're subscribing to. And so we need to put that into this cost center. So it used to be in, um, periodicals and so it's moved over to a different location. So the actual increase in the technology, instructional technology line in terms of dollar to dollar is, is not, is not significant. The, the shift really is, these are the things that used to be in other places and now we're putting them all in one place to kind of make that transparent. That's not to say there's not some increases in technology, but specific to the software.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's where, that's kind of where that's, where that's living. So for example, the, the, um, the PIP program, which has both a, the personal injury program, was in the curriculum cost center. And so we could say that now that's, that's being moved and worked to this cost center.
Right.
And the way that, um, the way that they kind of asked to, to do that doesn't make it look like it's a substantial increase year over year.
Mm-hmm.
So when you see the next budget, when you see the next budget summary for, uh, when I report on the budget, I'll say, you know, here's, we actually created a special code just for instructional things and here's where we're putting it. So we have more visibility into that as well. And sometimes those lines also include the support and the professional development that goes along with that. So the, and often the print materials as well. And so it's a bundle that, um, that is included in the, in those lines.
So the entire elementary math program as an example. So by cutting that, that would remove the core resource.
Yeah.
Got it. So it's a, it's a, like, some items, i- items are hardware, some of them are the soft, software for the curriculum, so one has to actually like look through each item within the technology and understand what that word is.
Mm-hmm. Is the Director of Digital Learning, are they, considering you're currently researching, are they in the budget now or not in the budget?
Uh, it's in the Central Office Cost Center.
Okay.
And Sarah, did you budget it for the current level? Your call.
Um, we were, we were going to talk about that a little bit more at the tri-board meeting. But, um, so talk about a, a kind of a shift in there, but yes, there's funding for, there's funding for, for that depending on what happens.
It's funded at the, at the Director level?
It's funded at the Director.
With, and so it's no change.
Okay.
Sarah, if I understood, I think, what you just said, but I'm not sure. It sounds to me as if there, there are reclassifications that make it difficult to say we have apples here and apples there. So really the only, the only global way that I can think of to look at this is total budget to total budget as opposed to pieces. Is that a fair way to look at it or am I just?
No, you, you're right. And I think the other piece of that that's, that's very hard is that, is that the companies are bundling everything together. And so it's very, it's, it's almost impossible to, to break out. Here's the software subscription and here's, and here's the other pieces that, or the ancillary pieces that go along.
They don't want you to know presumably.
And I, and so, and so as a result of that, we've had this, it's, it's, um, it's called Gatsby ninety-six. That we've been, that we have a whole list of things where we said, okay, these are all of the things that we know have a software component to them. So it might be that that software component is used, it's, um, it's a video that's, that goes along, um, that goes along with, with the, with the, the printed material. Or it's an activity and, oh, by the way, in addition to the activity, you also get, you also get this creative piece. So because of that, it's much harder to, to break that out budget, budget to budget.
Sarah, would you say for parents' purposes, most of what was reclassified by in the current budget was sitting in curriculum and instruction and next year is sitting in technology?
Next year.
So I think it's really those two cost centers that end up distorted by the reclass.
Yes, yeah. And also in, um, we had something called periodicals and, and, um, and online, sort of online texts. And, and sometimes it was right in the instructional, right in the line for, for supplies. Because teachers have been using that resource for, um, as a supplemental for many, many years. On a right, at the building level. So it, they were definitely very scattered. And now they are, now they are all in one, it's the same place. Now they're, now they're, now they're together.
Can I ask also, is it fair to say that then that any materials that are being used go in technology? Whereas teaching the teachers how to instruct with those materials go in curriculum and instruction?
No, no.
Or no?
No, okay.
I guess maybe I'm.
Yeah. Too much of a generalization. Let me, let me give another example. So when we look at the elementary, um, math resource in Vision, we pay for a package that includes professional learning, um, print materials and a digital subscription, teacher access to other materials and it's all kind of bundled in one. That would have lived in a couple of different places at the building level. It could have been in instructional supplies. It would have been put into professional learning, um, it would have been put into consumables. Now it's all in one place and it happens to be shown in the software. Um, sometimes professional learning is planned, that, um, is planned out of my office and it might be just based on a general need. We wanna learn more about tech integration, but it's not tied to a particular software tool that we're purchasing. Right? So if you, if you purchase a product, sometimes it comes along with PD.
Mm-hmm.
But if we go out and plan the PD, that's gonna live in the curriculum instruction part of the budget still.
Okay.
So it's, it would be nice if you could just make a, a very general statement and have that all work, but it won't.
Okay. So if I'm understanding it correctly, the forty-five percent decrease in the curriculum isn't like we're replacing curriculum with technology. We just moved the, that format of curriculum into the technology. So you need to think of it, it's not a thirty percent increase in technology and a forty-five percent decrease in curriculum.
Well, it's actually, there, there are a couple, there are a couple of new roles that were, that lived in, um, the curriculum and instruction tab in year one. And when we, um, begin with a new major curriculum program, so an example at the middle school level, the Desmos Math Program, in year one, it lives in the curriculum instruction tab and then we move it off.
Yeah.
So you see sort of an, almost an artificial increase and decrease in year one for the new program.
Mm-hmm.
And then also because of the offset of features.
Thank you.
During your presentation, you mentioned coding a few times. Um, when do kids start learning, what grade level do they start learning to code in? Is it a mandatory class or is it?
Uh, it's, it's, it, it's going to occur during their library media special period. And, uh, so it's not taking that, it's not taking any time away from really writing a math. So how many special periods a week do students have library media as a special, Melissa?
One.
One. Is that, is that like a forty-minute period?
Forty minutes.
Yeah. So it's during a period they already have the special that we're going to be incorporating some coding-type activities into that particular special. Yes.
At every grade, at every grade level.
At every grade level. Right? And those skills, because we, because Code Monkey is a curriculum, then those skills have a scope and sequence and they will build on each other, right? So at the beginning, you may be teaching students some pattern recognition. And eventually that pattern recognition may turn into, um, um, various steps, like a first, second, uh, third, next, and so on. And that's the definition of coding, right? Like it's all these sequential steps and patterns that, that turn into a language. And that language, um, instructs the computer to, to do something. But it also is important, um, for other subjects, right? Uh, coding is a language, uh, and, and pattern recognition and abstract thinking and critical thinking are important skills and other areas of the, of the, of the curriculum.
At the elementary level, it's also not entirely accomplished, uh, in front of a screen. So the students are also using hands-on tools, um, in the library media center to learn about the process of, um, of creating code, but in a more hands-on way, recognizing patterns. So that's really the way they begin. And then there's a little bit of time, um, as they move through the grades where they're exposed more to a tech-based experience.
I, I do, I did not put up online, when you click through it, the very specific software with the budget associated with it. And, um, and that is because it is public and it hinders my ability to negotiate really good prices with, um, with our different, with different vendors that we're looking at. Um, but I'm happy, well, but I know that we can, Dr. McKinnon and I can talk about how to work with more and share that out if you want more.
Thank you. For me, you have to go, but my question about the, what's going up and what's going down.
Mm-hmm. Great. Any final questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinnon. So as the next step for the budget, I'll ask the board to please dig in, go through the website, um, look through the budget in detail, uh, in preparation for our workshop on February sixth. And we will go through, um, all of our decision-making process in order to get to a board through the budget.
And, um, something that's really important as you go through the budget process and you start coming up with other questions.
Yeah.
Sarah Scipani will send out the email with the budget sheet so that you can explore the budget, accounts, lines, and cost centers. It'll include a survey link and the survey link is the QR code right now. So that, um, that whether you're a Board of Education member or a parent, you can ask questions and you ask questions in the Google form and then all of those questions will go into a Google sheet. And we answer every question, um, that are asked with a detailed answer. And sometimes we, we notice some trends, like we may ask, we may see ten questions on coding, for example. And if we see a lot of questions in a particular topic, then we'll turn that, that topic into a couple of slides that we present at our budget workshop, right?
Yep. Great. And everyone should have that in their inbox now.
I restarted my computer and I'm going to have it, I'm sorry for your delay.
Great. Um, so moving on to our next agenda item, um, committee assignments. I just wanna make a couple, um, small changes to our committees. From the Curriculum Committee, I'm going to remove Carolyn Baker and Lisa Goldstein and thank them both very much for their service. They were parent representatives who served for several years. From the Bargaining Team, I'm going to remove Sharrar Sadana, who is now our CES Rep Council Member, representing ER nine. So thank you to Sharrar. And from the Facilities Committee, I will remove Chris Nolan, who again is a community member and has served for several years. So we thank him very much for his service and support of the board. And I will look for motion to adjourn. John, second? Les, all in favor? And it is eight-thirty and we are adjourned.